I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights Iowa City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, and the meeting is being conducted electronically. We're at a Zoom meeting thanks to Sarah O'Sullivan, our Zoom guru. Thanks again, Sarah, for hooking us all up. And the four of the five council are present. Casey's not here yet. First order of a business is approval of minutes. I'll take March 10th regular council meeting minutes and March 17th special council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or correction to these two minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. And now the March 24th special council meeting minutes. Chris had, in her clerk report, she had a correction by Abby Brown from the left law firm. Are there any objection to adding that correction? Okay, hearing none. Are there any objections to approving the minutes with that correction by Abby Brown? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, public input. Welcome, public. We have several members of the public attending tonight. Would anyone like to speak? You have five minutes that you can speak. Okay, I don't hear from the public, so we'll go on to the main.
I think Sylvia wants to speak, so I just.
Okay.
Sylvia, I just want to make sure that you're not having any issues with the mic.
Thanks, Sarah. I just unmuted, so can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, super. So I am making a public comment with respect to the economic downturn that is being well-reported by financial institutions that are well-regarded in projections, and it's looking very dire. I mean, when we're being compared to the Great Depression era and this COVID pandemic and its economic impact in our region, it's incredibly devastating. So in reviewing the city budget, I'd like to know what steps this council will be taking to make adjustments to the city budget accordingly, so that the current budget for this fiscal year, which were, it should end in June 30th, what steps are you all taking to make sure that that budget isn't overblown? It already is in some departments. Just take a look. You'll review your percentage lines, and some of them are astronomically out of alignment with what was budgeted. And number two, the incoming budget starting July 1st is critical, in part because the Marriott Hotel Development Team has already cautioned strongly this council back in February, when this council at the behest of Steve Kuhl was adopting significantly large numbers or projections of hotel revenue. So with social distancing continuing to be an issue, with slow participation of some economic sectors coming back online, it's conceivable that we may have a football season that does not look like what we would like it to look in 2020. So I'd like to know what this council will be doing to protect and safeguard residents from completely surprising and unreasonable increases in property taxes at a later time.
Okay, I do want to say that I have talked with Steve Kuhl about this, and I've talked to Bobby about this, and we don't know how it's going to progress, but we are aware of it, and we have to see what it's going to affect. I agree. And the other thing is.
Bobby, what are, okay, go ahead. I'd like to also hear from Bobby, Chair of Finance, as well.
Well. It, you know, unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball on the thing. I would love to know exactly what the right steps are to take, but, you know, I think you're, it's, we're all right to be a little bit concerned about what that is, exactly what the steps are, you know, that we could do, because we don't know exactly what the, you know, what it's, how it's going to impact us and how severely. I don't know exactly the steps, but.
Is anybody monitoring the city budget at this point? I mean, Lori Kamara's monthly reports are pretty accurate. That's your draw against the budget.
We're going to discuss some of this.
Expenditures on that.
We're going to discuss some of this with the goal-setting session. We will be discussing more in detail about that, because it's going to affect our goal-setting session, and that's the plan. And yes, we're keeping an eye on it. So is there anyone else who wants to speak to the council? Let's see, who else is here? Pat or, okay, we'll go on. The mayor's report, okay. With my report, I have, the main item I have is salaries of the city staff. And according to the city audit, we need to put the salaries of the city staff on the agenda so that the public is aware of them. And during budget, we figured a cost of living of 2.2% raise, and that's what I have for the city clerk and for the city treasurer, as you can see from the report. And then the salaries of the full-time police officers, that's in front of you also. The only thing that changed some is the police supervisors, and Sarah and I agreed that they deserve to have a little bit more 3.0% raise, and that's what's before you. But I'm going to ask the council approve the city staff salaries. It's consideration of salaries for city clerk and city treasurer for FY '21. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Okay. It's hard for me to tell who that is.
Bobby.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a second by Sarah. Discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Did I hear four ayes? Okay, I just heard two, so thank you. So it's 4-0, and Casey is absent. And then we're going to consider the salaries at the police budget, of the police, at the police budget, because I think it's best to hire Brian before we vote for a raise. And then, do you have any questions about my other report? Anything in it? I think I put in everything that was needed. Okay, so then we'll go to Steve's report, the legal report.
Thanks, Mayor. The first thing on the agenda that I covered in the report is ordinance 246. This was the ordinance that was regulating the placement of refuse and recycling containers when, you know, when they're not out at the curb. And we'd taken a couple whacks at this, or I guess this is maybe the second one. The first one just addressed rental housing, and the council directed that we revamp ordinances so that same rules apply to owner-occupied homes as well as rental housing, rental homes. So we made an effort at that last month, and I think that the ordinance then, it was more, more, it was firmer. It directed that containers couldn't be visible, and current concerns were raised that, you know, sometimes that wasn't possible to make it invisible or not visible from the front street, and you know, when people just put up some, some kind of haphazard barrier so that it can't be seen. And then also, the concern was that some homes have a back street or a side street that's, you know, closer than the front street, so why make it not visible from the front street? So there were some concerns raised. So we tried to address some of those, and what we did with the current version of the ordinance is we just said that you had to put the container behind what's called the front foundation line of the home, but that the aspirational portion of the ordinance says, try to make it so it's not visible, you know, but at a minimum, get it behind the front foundation line. So that's what the current ordinance says. I've received some feedback that I think is pretty good, frankly, and we may need to take, the council may want to take a different look at that, but I don't want to steal Bobby's thunder. I think he may have some input here, but the present ordinance, just as I said in my report, requires placement behind the front foundation line.
Did Bobby want to speak?
Yeah, so I think the intention was, at least what I remember when we spoke about it last meeting, was basically to get the containers behind the front face of the property. The issue with using the word "foundation line" is that the foundation line is basically just a line parallel to the street at the furthest-most, you know, point of the house. And so, I don't know if, I was just thinking that we could basically make it behind the front face of the house. So I don't know, Sarah, I put together a little sketch that I sent to Steve, and I don't know if Sarah, you have that, you can throw it up, but basically, it's just, the idea was get the containers behind the front face of the house, essentially. So if you had your porch or your front step or whatever it was that was, you know, closer to the street than your garage, the idea was you don't want your container sitting right in front of the garage, even though that would be behind the front foundation line of the house. So I was suggesting that we change that verbiage, I guess, to, yes. So you can't really see it, but there's a gray line that runs parallel right there, that foundation line. I kind of covered it up with my text, but.
So this is the foundation line here?
So the way, with the way it's worded currently, those two red boxes in the middle would be acceptable, because that is, in fact, behind the foundation line. But I think we want it, that the idea is we want it. We don't want it, we don't want to permit that. It was the way I understood it last week when we talked about it, or last month.
So Bobby, if I may, so looking at that diagram, just so everyone's clear, the two balloons that say "not acceptable" that are on the right, that's your illustration of what would be permitted by the current version of the ordinance.
Correct.
But you're saying, hey, that's not, that's not acceptable, right?
Yeah, I thought that was, we did not want that to be accepted.
Right, right. And I just, I just want the council to be clear. The left balloon that says "not acceptable" is an example of something that's not only not acceptable in terms of how it looks, but it's also, that's the only one that's depicted here that would be prohibited by the current version of the ordinance. So I just want the council to be clear. I think what Bobby's pointing out is that, hey, all we've done here is we've prohibited the left "not acceptable" balloon, but we've, but we're still permitting the two right "not acceptable" balloons. Do I have that right, Bobby?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what's the wording then, instead of "foundation line"?
Yeah, so Bobby said "face," and I, and got some reasonable, so if that's the, I think it's a good point. I mean, it's not my call, it's your call, but if, I think we, give me another whack at this, and I think the point is what Bobby's illustrated here, and I wish I would have gotten with him before, just before the meeting a couple days ago, because the point is, you want them not to be anywhere in the front, right?
Right.
Yeah, that was my understanding, too. I mean, I, I guess I don't feel strongly with the wording now, but I would be fine with an update that would prohibit kind of all the red boxes that Bobby.
Sorry, as long as we're not just saying the green ones are completely acceptable, we're still being aspirational about.
Right.
If you have a garage, come on, folks. Use a garage, or, you know, if it can go farther back.
I think it's going to be pretty much case by case, isn't it? Depending on your lot size and proximity to your neighbor's property.
I think you're right, Lisa, in what you said. That's still in there, too. Like, if you can get it out of the way, out of sight, do it.
I still want to water down that we're being aspirational.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I won't, I won't, I won't adjust that, Lisa.
It's, yeah, it's permitted, but it's not ideal or whatever.
So I just want to be clear on the wording. I didn't quite, just on the, on the side, on the side lot.
I think the wording on the side lot, Louise, probably will not change. It'll be what the ordinance says now, which is that people are strongly encouraged to make it so you can't see the container from any street, and to keep it inside if you can. But the requirement will be that it's, it's not, and I don't know what the wording is going to be, but that it's not on the front face, let's say.
Can the council accept it with that wording tonight, or do you need to rework it?
My suggestion would be, and the council's, obviously, it's the council's prerogative, but my suggestion would be, since this is an example of an ordinance that's been before you, in somewhat the same version for a couple of months, let me come back and fix the language for May, but this might be one where you want to collapse at least the first two readings, or, you know, maybe even all three of them, or not, but, you know, it might make sense to collapse, and it'd give you, it'd give you the same timing as if you adopted it for the first time tonight, but my suggestion would be not to adopt it until we have the wording where we want it.
Are there any other discussion issues by the council? Okay, we'll go on to 2012.
Okay, so Resolution 2012, as I noted in the legal report, is the renewal of the 2080 agreement with the City of Iowa City for bus service, transit service. It's an increase of CPI 2.0, can't remember the exact number percent, and.
2.3.
Thank you. And so, so that, everything else is the same in the 2080 agreement as it has been previously, so a $900 increase, thank you, 2.3% CPI. So that resolution will be before you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Lisa, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Thank you for raising your hand, Doug. Discussion. Roll call, vote.
O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
And Casey's not on, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, 4-0 carried.
Okay, and then we have 2013.
In Resolution 2013, these agreements frequently, not necessarily every year, but this is one where they kind of go hand in hand. I mean, they're separate. This is an agreement with Johnson County, not Iowa City, but another 2080 agreement that relates to transportation. This is for paratransit or seats services. And this, this agreement, the council considers every year, there's no change in this agreement from, from the current agreement, the terms of the agreement, including the contract price. It's a, it's a $25 per ride cost. Somebody else probably is better equipped to speak to what this has been costing the city, but, but for several years, there was a set price that gave us so many rides, and then seats came to us and said, you know, you're not really using those rides. Why don't you just adjust it to a per-ride cost? And it saved the city considerable amount of money, and last I knew, there really wasn't much, if anything, being spent on it. So that's what 2013 is, the approval of the 2080 agreement with Johnson County for seats, paratransit services.
Say 2013 is before you. Is there a motion?
Lisa will make the motion.
Motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Swales?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Carried, 4-0.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing is.
Yeah.
The expenditure.
Yeah, so as, the whole Zoom process is pretty new to me. I guess, you know, I don't know if it is to you or not, but as we got up and going, and Sarah was, you know, invaluable, I think the first meeting was done on an account that she had access to. And then, as the world started doing Zoom, you may have heard about this, there's this concept of Zoom bombing, I guess, where people can break into your meetings and start showing videos and the like. So I think the way to get away from that is to get the Zoom Pro version and then password-protect it, which is, so that came up on an off-meeting time. The council didn't really have time to react to it, but the mayor and Sarah and I were talking about it, and I told the mayor that she certainly had the authority to authorize the expenditure of the $150, but that the council, you know, would be wise to go ahead and ratify that expenditure at the next meeting, which is tonight. So the agenda item is just to ratify the mayor's authority to expend $150 to obtain the Zoom Pro.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sarah, is there a second?
Second by Lisa.
Second by Lisa, thank you. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries 4-0 with Casey absent. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the city clerk report. Chris?
You all received my clerk report, the updated building permit spreadsheet. There wasn't an update to the rental permit spreadsheet. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and if you want to reach out to me, text, call, I'd say stop by, but you can't unless you're bringing alcohol, so that's about it for me.
Any questions for Chris? Okay, we'll go on to Treasures Report. Lori joined the meeting. Hi, Lori. She sent the reports and also the warrants, the list of warrants. Are there any objections to pay in the warrants? Are there any additions that you know of, Lori? No? Okay. Hearing no objections or no additions, the current warrants will be approved by unanimous consent. Thank you. And then we'll go on to community protection. And Sarah and Troy, who wants to start? Maybe Troy.
All right, I'll start.
I'll let Troy go first, you go ahead.
All right, first of all, I apologize for not distributing my March report. I had meant to do that, and I was totally unaware of it until Chris pushed out the minutes for the March report, and I realized I hadn't hit send. Just want to visit a couple things on the March report. Nick Cox, a former University of Iowa police officer, he's now with the Eastern Iowa. He joined us in March as a part-time-as-needed officer, which is a good addition. We are using him, or have been using him, to help cover hours. The Tipton Police Department has approved purchasing our 2017 Ford Explorer. I just need to work out the timing of that. When I spoke with Steve Kuhl, there's some budget considerations as to when that actually needs to occur. So that's from March. In April, you have my report. I can't help but be wordy, I apologize for that, but things that I am requesting council approval on, understaffing. These are all numbers that have been discussed with you generally as a group, and some of you individually, when we went through the budget process. But I would like to add an additional pay step. Rather than adjust all of the steps to try to keep us somewhat competitive with other agencies, I really have no intention of ever hiring an officer that does not have any experience. I would like to add a sixth step to our, to our approved pay scale. When I had conversations with Sarah about this, she said, "Does it really need to be at six years, or can you put it farther out?" I think, if I remember correctly, Sarah and I even talked about eight years. I put it out to 10 years. Officers will get that. You will have an experienced department. They are coming with, with that much experience in many cases. But I would like to create that sixth step that is roughly equivalent to a 5% bump from the top officer pay right now. So that is one item. The second item, under the whole pay raise or pay scale adjustment, is an inflationary or an adjustment to pay scale beginning with the new fiscal year to try to offset the inflation index. At the time that I did this, the inflation index was hovering at around 2.2% when I put my budget together. Generally, 3% is a good, is a good number to consider. The Iowa City Police Department has seen a total of a 4% increase in pay this year. They're seeing it in 2% for six months, and then 2% six months later. We have made other adjustments. You generously, or it was a needed correction, but an adjustment to how we handle family health care, things like that. So I think, I think this 2.2%, while on the bare minimum side, is adequate to keep us competitive and to keep officers happy and in good morale, and, and we don't need to be equal to Coralville or Iowa City or even North Liberty. We just need to create a work environment that officers want to work at and want to remain at. So I would request a 2.2 increase to all pay steps effective July 1st with the new fiscal year. Also included in that, and I know officer part-time pay or part-time-as-needed officer pay isn't reflected in the scale, but I would like to do a slight increase to that from $21 to $21.50 per hour. And those are part-time-as-needed officers. It's not like every month, they're covering a given amount of hours. They cover when we have staff shortage just due to illness, vacation, lack of staffing, whatever the case may be. So those are the pay items, and I don't know if I should stop there before I go on to additional staffing. How would you, how do you want me to do that, Louise?
Well, I think I want you to stop there, and Sarah wants to talk a little bit, too, about some of that, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess just in addition to that, you know, Chief Kelce can recommend, you know, increases for his officers, but he can't do that for himself. So, you know, Louise and I have discussed, and we would recommend a 3% raise for him and for Sergeant Tucker. So I want, just want to include that that is our recommendation. So Chief has been doing a wonderful job with the stability of the department and bringing in, you know, experienced officers. He's going to present, I think, a little bit later. And someone else, he's recruited to the department, you know, that he's worked on that for a long time, and recognizes that now is the time to do that, and.
Down to the dollars.
What's that?
What's that breakdown to in the, in the dollars?
As far as what, Doug?
The proposed increases in salaries?
It's on my mayor's report, but it's $29.31 is what Sergeant Tucker was making an hour, and with 3%, he'll make $30.19 per hour.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief Kelce is paid salary at $82,000 a year, and that will make him $84,460 per year. And I was wondering about the part-time police. I'm glad you suggested that, Troy, because we kind of missed discussing that. And you're saying they're at $21, is what I saw, so you're suggesting 21.50.
Correct. Much of their hours, for example, football, and right now, and I'll get to it in my report, but we're assisting University of Iowa in part of our kind of county-wide response and how we can respond to COVID. But we're helping University of Iowa right now with security as we are able over at University of Iowa hospitals and clinics. Those type assignments, when I came on, I entered into memorandums of agreement with, with University of Iowa, and they reimburse us directly for those costs. So those hours are not coming out of our budget, and that is paid at their old special event overtime rate, not the 21.50, but the 21.50 is what we realize when we use those officers to cover shortages when full-time officers cannot work for whatever reason.
So, okay, very good, so.
And I would add, and I don't know if I made it clear, I would add, Sarah's exactly right. I, this pay scale does not reflect supervisors, which is Sergeant Tucker or me, but these numbers and my ask here are all things that are already, when we went through the budget discussion, are already included in my budget numbers, specifically my employee costs for the upcoming. the upcoming fiscal year. The exception is Sergeant Tucker and I, but even then I, I tried to do some sort of calculation and for, for the basis of doing projections so that I would have adequate budget numbers, I just protected everybody at 2.2. Those numbers are in the budget. Uh, this is, this is again, part of that discussion that we've been having for months.
Okay. So Steve, do we need to vote on that sixth step? That he talked about adding a sixth step. We have a five-step police.
I think it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't think so either. So let's start with that to vote on the, adding the sixth step at the 10th year. Uh, is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion by Sarah. Is there a second? Second by Lisa. All in, uh, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, motion carries four zero with one absent. And, uh, so the next thing would be the full-time police salaries raised, the police supervisors raise, and then the part-time, uh, police officers. Uh, is there a motion for those raises?
Motion.
Motion by Sarah and a second by Bobby.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries four zero with one absent. And then, what, you wanted to, did I commit anything Troy?
Yes, please. I'd like to move on now. Uh, we are approved staffing as the chief and four full-time officers. Uh, we, we achieved that staffing last summer, uh, before Officer Stenda left as he moved out of the area. Uh, that occurred in September and I did not want to hire somebody at that time just because I had a vacancy. We were, we were already into football season. I did not want to try to spin somebody up and I had assembled a reliable group of part-time officers who were full-time officers elsewhere that could help me, but help University Heights cover football season. And, and we got through that just fine. I have been in discussion with Brian, actually Officer Brinkema. He's one of our part-time officers and most, maybe all of you have met him, uh, various functions. The captain with the Independence Police Department, he has, I believe, over 25 years with the Independence Police Department, over 30 years in law enforcement. He's currently under the same retirement system than us. So unlike Officer Akers, he cannot retire from independence and then take a, another position here. He has to resign from independence. Uh, I cannot.
Casey's joining the meeting. I'm sorry. Casey, can you hear us? No? I mean, it says connecting to audio down below.
Yeah, just let him in. So.
Is, is that?
Joining.
Him? I mean, we can wait a little bit maybe. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Well, it almost looks like he's standing in front of the White House. Or the Jefferson Building or something. Uh, Casey, can you hear us? I don't think you can yet.
I believe that's Colonel Sanders' home.
Maybe you can text him.
Yeah, I know. I have been. So sorry if I looked.
I'm sure you have.
I saw an unknown number trying to join and I didn't know that was him.
It's not quite working. Like, it's kind of like mine.
Must have lousy internet.
He did one of those still pictures. That's what I need to do. Well.
Wait a minute. I see another.
You're getting close because I was, oh, 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 that was close.
Yep, there's Karen McCutcheon. There we go.
Oh, here he is.
He's still muted.
Casey, can you hear us?
You're muted, Case.
Casey, can you hear me? This is Louise. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Uh, we're on the police report and Troy is talking about hiring, uh, Brian Brinkema.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
So since I came on last April, uh, I've actually been in discussion about Brian coming down and working part-time for us and I was, I succeeded in, in cajoling him to do that as, as of September last year. I had a holiday gathering for all officers, part-time and full-time early January and I had a chance to, to lobby his wife a little bit too. So, Brian does not do anything on impulse, but he came to me in mid-January and said, we need to talk. So I've been talking with him since then with the goal of eventually bringing him on if I could make the numbers work for him or if he could feel comfortable with it more accurately and not match his compensation of what he's making in independent. With the COVID-19 response and, and, and healthcare emergency, healthcare disaster that's going on right now, it becomes more critical for me from an operation standpoint to staff that full-time position rather than try to realize a few more dollar savings and not hire Brian until the new fiscal year. Again, we're, we're approved at a chief and four officers already. I've just been getting by without that fifth officer. We don't have the staff to be able to weather an officer or a family member either getting sick or having a significant exposure and then that officer is out two weeks. I cannot continue to, I can't rely on my part-time at this time like I could at football because those, those part-time officers are full-time officers elsewhere and they have restrictions or they have, they have responsibilities to their primary job. So I, from an operation standpoint, I feel like it's, it's imperative that I staff that final position. I'm glad that Brian and I had discussed this for some time, uh, and that I was, I was comfortable in, in pushing it forward at this point as opposed to having to start from scratch. But because of that, I'm asking for, I, I would like to move forward with filling that position now. Again, it's an already approved position. I've just been doing without. Brian would start next Monday. Uh, that's, that's the plans that we've laid in place. He already is technically, as far as the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy is concerned, he's already an employee for the University Heights Police Department. He's just a part-term, part-time employee. So from their standpoint, it's just a matter of me changing his status. But I wanted you all to know and I wanted to make sure I had your blessing to do that.
And you also wrote in your report, uh, that FEMA funds could possibly cover this.
That is correct. That is correct. I sat through the FEMA orientation, uh, for application for FEMA aid and our expenses, the police departments and I think University Heights expenses dealing with COVID-19 or responding to COVID-19 have been nothing so far. Uh, we're fortunate that we live in Donson County and we have a well-prepared emergency management agency and that we work as a cohesive unit with a unified response. It means I'm much busier, even if my officers have scaled back their activity and become more reactive because I don't have staff to delegate to these meetings. I'm doing it, but it's all good and it, and it means that, that we, University Heights are in a great position. I sat through the aid orientation. We had no expenses, but what I, one of the things that I learned was 75% to possibly 90% of certain costs, including employee costs are eligible for submission to FEMA for reimbursement. Uh, I think, and it's documented both in University Heights Council meeting notes. It's documented in, in minutes, uh, from the emergency operations center out at EMA that we are accelerating this hire specifically to be prepared to staff for COVID-19. So I think that, I think that those expenses from date of hire, which would be from April 20th to beginning of fiscal year, I think, uh, those are legitimate things to put in and ask FEMA to reimburse. What happens? I don't know, but those are, that's a legitimate ask from the federal government.
Are there any other questions? Otherwise, we, uh, is there a motion to hire Brian Brinkema?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Oh, second by Doug. Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. I will hurry through a few other items and again, I, I, I know I've taken up a significant amount of your time. Uh, our COVID-19 response, what we are doing and what we have done is listed. Uh, the only thing that I would add is Sarah and I, Sarah and I had a discussion about limiting, completely limiting visitors into the community center or into the, through the front police department doors, uh, to our window. At this point, while our foot traffic has actually increased because people are at home and they're out trying to get exercise and rather than mail in their parking ticket payment, they're stopping by with it. Uh, we are able to, to sanitize the areas that they visited. They're not allowed into the actual officer area of the police department. At this point, I'm comfortable still allowing it, but Sarah and I had a good discussion on that and that may be a possibility in the future as to further limit access. The mayor and I participate in daily briefings through the emergency management agency's emergency operations center on COVID-19. I realize that a lot of community members want to be very helpful and don't realize what is taking place on a countywide, as a countywide response, but truly we are in a good place and there, we are, we are prepared and we continue to increase capacity at every level. So I, a shout out to our emergency management agency and mayor from. I already mentioned that we are helping out University of Iowa Police Department with staffing for UIHC security. That is in the community's best interest. So that is in our best interest as long as we are able to do that without getting officers sick or compromising our staffing. And, and right now we're using part-time officers when we're able. Again, I already mentioned FEMA, uh, and the possibility of offsetting employee expenditures. Uh, item number G, kind of got lost in the whole COVID shuffle, but back at, oh, March 20th it began, but University Heights was the apparent victim or the apparent subject of a Russian bot attack against our webpage. Uh, we recognized thoroughly. I contacted uh, Lisa about it as the government chair and she worked with, with Civic, she worked with our provider to, to shut it down quickly and, and it's just kind of an aside, but I thought it was, I thought it was rather interesting. Finally, the last thing, well, the second to last thing that I'd like to talk about is I get the occasional complaint, if you will, or the concern voiced about the poles that are on Swisher Track. They were located back when, when Black Squirrel did the, the tree pruning or tree removal on Swisher Track and they dragged, there's about seven of them total and they're, they're two different sizes, but light fixtures up to the end of Sunset Street. Each of those poles weighs upward of 500 pounds. It's not something that I or other officers or Russ can easily move around. But I received complaints from the people who live in that area specifically that not only were they unsightly, but their grandkids were coming over and, you know, going out to play in the woods and were playing on this pile of rusty old poles with sharp jagged edges and they were going to get hurt and what was the city going to do about it? What was I going to do about it? I went down there and stretched yellow police tape around it. Uh, Casey's come in and, and done a ride along with me. He knows, he knows what I'm talking about. But to try to at least cordon off the area and while visually it accomplishes that, the yellow police tape doesn't stop anybody, particularly children from going in there and climbing on, I'm sure what looks like something fun to them. Uh, sometime I noticed it first this last week, but it has begun to accumulate trash. I don't know whether it blew from somebody's yard or it was found on Swisher Track, but there's now a, a chase lounge thrown on the pile with its cushion. I, I, I just think the neighbors' concerns there, I think their, their complaints are legitimate. And from a police chief perspective, I do think it's an attractive nuisance. I do think that, that left alone, there's the potential that somebody could get hurt and I mean, Steve can speak to it better than I can, but there is a potential liability issue. It was suggested that perhaps I just have those or, or that those poles were relocated back to wherever they were found. I don't think that's the solution. If there is some desire and, and I've heard that this might be the case, but if there's some desire to save those poles because they have some sort of historic or, or nostalgic value, then I think that they should be relocated or some sort of enclosure should be built around them for a public safety view. If there is no desire to do that, or if that is so far down the line that, that it isn't worth dealing with those poles or saving those poles now, then I think that they should be removed and discarded, disposed of. I took the liberty to, to check with somebody who has done work for me in the past at, at a, what I think is a very good rate. He came out actually today and he said that, and I, I was surprised at the cost, but when we talked through it, but he said for a thousand dollars, he could bring in a skid loader, load those poles onto a trailer and take them out and, and dispose of them at the landfill. And he estimated that half of that estimate would actually go towards his landfill fee to have them removed. I think that's reasonable, but I'm not sure what council's thoughts are with those poles. So I have, I have one more item I'd like to, to move on to, but I, I want to pause there and see what council would like me to do or if they'd like me just.
Just get rid of them. That's my opinion.
Where'd they come from? Were they found? That, were they in there again and pulled up? Where did they?
Yeah, I can see they were from the city of university, uh, city of Iowa City from the 30s or 40s or something like that. Cause there's pictures of them. And, but they're all broken up. And they're about 500 pounds apiece, Troy told me. So, I mean.
Louise, it's just occurred to me and that, given the timeframes that you identified, this may be a non-starter. But I wonder if, uh, if there's any way to approach Mid-American. You know, to see if there have been American poles that they're responsible for removal after their useful life.
Well, I could get ahold of the, uh, the community, uh, person, you know, it used to be Donna, Donna Ashmore and I have the new person, she retired who I could reach out to her tomorrow.
Might be an idea. I doubt there's any markings on them. They might be, they might be truly telephone poles and with these, I don't know, but just a thought.
Is there a Johnston County Historical Society that would be interested in those? I, I'm serious, like out there.
Well, we can leave them there for a year and research all of this, I guess. I mean, I'm just not a big fan of it, but I think it's a hazard for these people.
I think. Liability. I think we need to get rid of them.
And so I'd be willing to check out with Mid-American, but, uh, I think they ought to go personally. I agree with Bobby.
Are they scrap metal?
I, I'm not certain of the metal. I wondered that also, whether they had any value. When I talked to, uh, the individual that I spoke with today, he said they were not of any value to him in that capacity and that his plans, if we chose to move forward with them, were to, were to take them to the landfill. Cause I, you know, I don't care whether they're used to spill, whether they're recycled. I honestly don't care. I don't care if we have him relocate them to some other area or we have Russ build some sort of enclosure for them. Where they are right now is a potential, is a potential liability and the longer they sit there, I, I mean, not only do I think it's a potential, but I think that, I think that some, somebody will eventually get hurt on them. Some kid will eventually get hurt on them.
I think we should get rid of them. I'm just wondering if there might be a cheaper way, but if not, let's just do what we need to do.
And my vote is if, if we can get Mid-American to get rid of them and save some funds, do that. If not, we just pay Troy, uh, whoever that, you know, we just pay to get him, get rid of him.
I knew.
I agree with Bobby and Louise on this.
I know Kip was interested in them here about, oh, it was toward fall. I know he, uh, he went back there and he found one originally and, uh, he was asking me to come back there and help him drag him out until he told me how heavy. and he was asking me to come back there and help him drag them out until he told me how heavy they were. But Kip might be interested in those or at least maybe you could get somebody that could get them out to no cost to us.
I think you're exactly right. I think, I, I don't believe that Black Squirrel, which is who University of Heights had do the work. I don't believe they on their own decided to bring them up. I think, I, I'm not 100% certain of this, but I believe that Kip, while Black Squirrel was out there, asked them to drag them up there to Sunset or the end of Sunset where they would be more immediately accessible. Which is fine, but Swisher Track development does not appear to be something that's going to take a few months. It appears like it's going to take years.
I, I can reach out to Kip and see if he would like to do something with them. So if it's no expense to, to any of us, I mean, you know, if there's somebody that wants them to collect them or restore them or, or whatnot, and then I guess if nobody wants them, we could scrap them out.
And I am in no rush.
From the city.
I am in no rush. I just, when I'm down there patrolling and it's getting warm again, when I'm down there walking, I, I want to be able to say that yes, I've, I've heard your concerns. Your elected officials have heard your concerns and they're in the process of coming up with a solution.
Okay, Doug, you check with Kip and I'll check with Mid-American, okay? We'll talk if that's okay with the rest of the council.
And the final things, and I promise I'll be fast. I'd like to say thank you specifically to Sarah, but to the whole council and really the whole community. It would be easy to get super crabby with, with the situation and be frustrated. I can only speak to University Heights, but people have been great. Council's been supportive. I know that Sarah made arrangements through the mayor or with the mayor to get some signs that were posted. That was great. The 40 mile an hour winds played havoc with them and they didn't last very long, but thank you very much. So, thank you for that. Two things that didn't make the list. Louise had mentioned in a conversation with me, maybe two weeks ago, maybe more, that she had or would be speaking with Russ about repairing the spring pothole repair. I had my officers, because they're out doing patrol anyway, do a street survey and make a list of every last pothole in University Heights. I shared that with Russ, which he said was very helpful. So I know that he has done the patching. I have worked with Abby out of Steve Ballard's office about a, an ongoing property, a rental property that we've had issues with that I know Abby's doing some follow-up right now. So we're working on that. And lastly, the tenant in One University Place directly above the police department spoke with me two, maybe three weeks ago about the disrepair of the flags, the poor condition of the flags outside of One University Place. I spoke with Louise about that, who had conversations with. I can't remember who.
Axwell.
Yes. But bottom line is One University Place, it sounds like, has supplied those flags in the past, but never intended it to be, they did it, they did it kind of out of civic duty.
Yeah, three times, three or four times.
I have, I have made arrangements for those flags to be replaced and you should see those coming up here in the next couple of weeks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks Troy. Appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. Anything else for Troy you want to ask him? I was remiss and skipped over Jim Glasgow. Jim Glasgow is present tonight and he has submitted some photos, I understand? Maybe Sarah?
He has.
Okay. Jim, are you here?
Yes. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yep. And.
Hotel photos.
Yeah, Sarah's pulling up the photos. In the meantime, I was going to tell Troy, we do have a dumpster, a recycling dumpster, metal, metal recycling dumpster onsite at the hotel. If you need to get rid of the light pole. And we also have plenty of skid loaders, so be glad to go load something if you need that.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we're just right. As long as Troy lets me drive on the street.
Wow.
Thanks Jim. I will, I'll reach out to you and, and maybe you and I can meet up there and you can take a look at it and make sure you're not biting off more than you are intending to.
All of our skid loaders lift to at least 2,000 pounds. So I don't think, I don't, yeah, unless, unless it's something I'm not aware of. We, we handle light poles all the time, so shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue. And if you don't, if you don't want them, we could cut them up and throw them in, in our recycling dumpster.
Excellent. I'll be in touch. There's probably three eight-foot poles, heavy duty, and then there's maybe five smaller ones and then a couple of what would have been the heads on them. But I'll be in contact with you and we'll take a look at them.
Yeah, all right. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so this picture that you're looking at here is actually the kitchen area of the rooftop restaurant. And this, this, it's a, it's a fairly large kitchen. It's about 2,000 square feet. And then down at the end there, at the very far end is a, is a banquet room. So this is about half of the restaurant up on the, on the rooftop. So you can go to the next one.
Okay, I don't know if they're in the same order you sent.
Yeah, that's all right. This, this is, uh, this is just a picture looking at it from Melrose. And you can see the, the, up at the very top, there is the, the roof that's projecting out from the restaurant area that we're, we're just, we're just starting to deck that part of that sloped roof there. I've got another picture that shows it a little further along, but you can go to the next one. Oh, that was a repeat, so.
The same.
Yeah. Oh, so here's our enhanced sanitation station. We've since gone to hand washing stations and, and we actually have, you can see a spray can of bleach down there. We, we kind of bleach everything at night and, and first part of the, first part of the day. We've had really no issues with anybody getting sick so far. So we're, we're real happy about that. Everybody is, is cooperating and we're, we're trying to keep, keep everybody really clean and, and everybody I see coming out of there washes their hands. So whether that's helping or not, I'm, I'm surprised really. The construction guys are really, really going along with the program. So you can go to the next one. So this is looking, this is looking from the railroad tracks up at the very top and that truss, that all those trusses projecting out, that, that's over the main part of the, of the rooftop restaurant. And those big openings there, those are all going to be glass windows looking kind of over towards Kinnick Stadium and the railroad tracks. You can move to the next one. So this picture was, this one I just took today and you can see the slope part of the roof at the very top is, we're, we're, we're getting that decked now. So probably within a week or two, we should have the whole building closed in and waterproofed. So that, that's a significant turning point for us because once we get the building dried in, then we can finish electrical plumbing and we'd be ready for sheet rock and insulation. So that should all happen within the next couple of weeks. We really had very few delays so far. I mean, it's, it's nice, there's no traffic there, it's easy to park. And so far, we haven't had anybody, no crews not show up. I mean, everybody, everybody's been able to stay on site and we've got plenty, plenty of space there for everybody to do their social distancing. So it's, it's so far, it's worked out pretty well. And at this stage of the game, we do have, we just finished with the city of Iowa City. We've got, we've got water main looped all around that building. So there's fire hydrants all the way around and they are live right now. So we do have, we have water pressure onsite. We don't have water into the building yet, but that'll happen within the next week or two. And then we'll be able to pressurize the water inside the building. And that, that's another big turning point for us. So. Um, okay, I guess I think there's one more picture maybe. Was that, or was that it?
It might be the.
Yeah, that's kind of the same one. Okay. So, um, we're, we're fairly close to still being on schedule. I, we, I've noticed some of the suppliers are telling us that they're, they're concerned that they may not get some things from, you know, China or overseas. What we're doing right now is we're going back and we're trying to get everything that we can made in America. And this, this, and this relates more to the finished materials inside the building and the, the fixtures and furniture and things like that. We're, we're going, we're going back and really directing everybody to get everything made in America if, if at all possible. So I think that's, that's a good thing all the way around. Oh, the only other thing is you're doing the Olive Court kind of sanitizer, the sewer there. So we're working with Bill Witter's Construction over there. We're letting him stage on, on our Olive Court lot. And then I'm kind of working with him to keep the streets clean. And I see they're about ready to patch the street back up there. So that whole area there around Olive Court shouldn't be cleaned up shortly too. And it's perfect timing because he's the same way. There's hardly any traffic out there and so it's a great time to work on streets. Other than that, that's kind of where we are right now. We're, we're getting ready to put the roof on and as soon as that happens, then we'll have a lot of interior changes. So if anybody's got any questions, I can, I can answer anything you want.
Jim, this may be a question that doesn't work very well right now, but are you finding that bids are more competitive or less competitive than during the, now during the COVID-19 virus or did you have all your bids beforehand?
Well, yeah, most of our, all of our bids were, were secured before that. If you want to get anything done right now though, not a good time. I mean, it's, it's, what I'm finding is that if you ask anybody, especially in the, in the mechanical or, or heating and air conditioning or any, they're, they're high priced as hell right now. Just because they don't either have the employees or they, you know, everybody's afraid to go out or, so it, it's not a good time to get anything done that you haven't already secured a bid for. What, what we are hoping to find though is, is that as people want jobs and want, you know, want to sell things, that, that we're going to be able to cut some of our, our interior, our interior costs, which is mostly fixtures and, and furniture. But it could go the other way. It's, it's hard, it's real hard to say right now. So, but nothing, nothing has, has really gone down. We haven't, we haven't had any cost savings except for, I gotta, I gotta admit, fuel is way down. I mean, my fuel costs have been cut in half here recently. So I'm, you know, running, running diesel and all, all the machines that we're using, we're, we're saving some money there right now.
Thank you very much Jim and I appreciate it. I'm glad I put you after the police report so you could help us with the light poles.
We, we've got, we've, we've got plenty of equipment and like I say, we have a recycling dumpster right onsite. So if, if that works, if that works out. Yeah.
Well, we'll check into some options. Thank you Jim. Thanks again.
All right.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to streets and sidewalks and Josiah and Doug. I see Josiah's on.
Yep. Uh, Josiah has a pretty good report. I pretty much just rubber stamped what he had. I really can't offer anything more than what he has on his report. Are you there Josiah?
Well, he's on.
There he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, we're just starting the streets and sidewalks report. And I was just saying, you have a pretty good report going already and I, I can't really offer anything more than what you had. So I guess if you want to go over what you had, you went to all the work, so I'm going to let you present it.
Okay, will do. Thank you. I'll start with the Olive Court improvements. So the work's obviously started as everybody's seen and as was just mentioned, I was out there this evening and person in Melrose tomorrow, probably tomorrow afternoon. Uh, so that's, that's good. They've been working well in that first phase of the project with utility connections. Ready's aware, in case you heard about it, they did hit a, a water service late this afternoon that was buried. It wasn't, it was unknown because it was buried under the ground, but it was Betty's Water Service. So they were this evening trying to get that fixed and they have not gotten it yet. I've talked to Betty. Had we met with her out onsite a couple of different times. Bad news is she doesn't have water, but they're might, that is taken care of. And the plan is they're going to be back out there tomorrow morning with new fittings and a bunch of new connections. The issue was the water service there was so old and the connection was so old that it just broke very easily.
Your volume was in and out.
Those scenarios are going to get new fittings tomorrow morning, be out there in the morning, have that repaired. Hopefully we're new.
Is there something with your computer volume? It goes in and out kind of and then goes, you know.
How's that going Louise?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think, I think it's a connection. I think it's a connection thing.
Okay Josiah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up really bad.
You'll break up. I don't know what's going on.
Any better yet?
A little bit.
Keep talking Josiah.
Keep talking.
Yeah.
Maybe he is.
Are you there? Josiah, I think we lost you.
Engineer is adjusting, you know.
Well, I don't know if you guys can hear me. I can hear you.
Okay, that's better.
Way better.
Okay, I'll go quick in case this drops again. So anyway, the, the work is proceeding. I'm on Olive Court. Um, the street sweeping, as I know, they're planning to start next week. And the third thing I had on there was the street repairs, which is a, same from last month. We had hoped to get those done, but we did not. So I'm still working on getting the panel replacements issued.
Very good. Are there any questions for Josiah? Okay. Is there anything else Josiah?
No.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Okay, and you didn't want to add anything Doug, that's.
Uh, no, I just, we've got some hot patch going on right now too, filling in these little potholes all around town. I, I don't know how complete we are with that process Josiah. Are we pretty down or is he still doing a few more?
Uh, it's a continuous process.
Okay.
Okay, that's much better, much better around my streets, much better. I've noticed. Okay, now we'll go to building zoning and sanitation. And Casey, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, if I could Louise. You know, a lot of this is, is pretty serious business, but what we're trying to do is get our act together with Karen Kurt and set up a time to establish some short-term goals over the next two years. And so what I found is, is it's kind of a fun process. I know for some of you and me thinking that it's a good time is not a, not a good indication of my character, I have to say. But I, I went through this process and I want to familiarize you with the process. And my report basically consisted of goals that came out of it. But I want to make it clear that these are my goals and I only have one vote. And I think that, that the, the kind of thing that everybody wants to add their own goals and then we'll try to get some traction on that and decide what the priorities are. So the, what they, what Karen is asking us to do is to identify our accomplishments, things that I'm proud of, future opportunities, concerns or threats, projects to be complete. And then out of all that comes our key goals. And a couple of things she says that I think are really important is that the list has to be consistent with our vision and goals, given our financing and staffing. And the other thing that I think is really important is that we have a champion for each one of the goals. And the other thing that I think is really important is that we have a champion for each one of the goals that we have. In other words, we got to find somebody who is very much in favor of this and will take the ball and kind of run with it. But I'll just give you an idea and I'm not going to talk about my goals. That's in my report. But I want to show you how this process goes. The things that I was most proud of in University Heights is number one. This sounds like. Pandering, but I'll tell you it's not. We have a wonderful new council. We have a great staff. We have. Extra wide sidewalks on Melrose and Sunset and we have LED lighting. For the accomplishments, I, I highlighted our new police chief, our new housing inspectors. Our ability to move quickly on the moratorium, the new O U P development. And our new hotel and the Olive Court improvements. For opportunities. I talked about connecting sidewalks, a new trail in the Swisher Track, development of the university. This is a, this is a sideline. I'll, I'll explain more if anybody has any questions. Expanding university, the, the Swisher Track, acquisition by. Long-term rent of the university land. Better city composting, a new initiative towards solarization in concert with the county. Connecting. Let's forget about that one. Taking advantage of parking along Marietta on game day, use of our bonding capacity. And for concerns and threats, I said, poor comportment on game day. That's probably not a surprise to anybody. Loss of affordable housing to investments. Older population and out migration, the enclave mentality, which I think. Universities has to a certain degree and deteriorating infrastructure. And then we talk about projects to complete. Help finance energy efficient projects, including solarization, the Swisher Trail. To me and someone to maintain it and open a dialogue with the university regarding long-term leasing of some of their land. Finally, the community foundation of University Heights and their ability. To take advantage of parking on Marietta. The other part of that is. That, that we. More effectively utilize those parking spaces during the year. We restricted them just to University Heights. Residents and I think that so far in, in Troy can tell us more. But so far we've never had more than about ten people parked there. So we'd have to reserve some spaces for them, but. I would say we can, we can. Expand that to university employees. On, on a permit basis. So that's what, that's basically what the. The goal setting session looks like. That's the exercise that it'd be nice if all of us went through. And I think later tonight, we're going to try to set up some dates that we can agree on. To set aside a couple of hours so we can go through this and nail down our priorities. So basically that, that concludes my. Report.
Thanks, Casey, because as you know, Karen said she'll try to send the details. Of Zoom meeting, which is a kind of a different format. But it was a delay because we weren't sure how with COVID nineteen pandemic, how this was going to go, but. She knows that council wants to still try to do this and so she's going to get back to us and suggest some dates. By the end of the week, this week, and then we'll send out an email. Okay, Casey? Is that okay? Thanks. Is there any questions for Casey? Okay, we'll go to finance. Bobby.
Yeah, so generally speaking, you know, things are in order. There is a C D. One C D that is matured that we have right now. It's a. We have a number of them. One, it's a Collins Community Credit Unit. It's a forty thousand dollar C D. It matured just a few days ago. Kind of, we need to make a decision on what to do with that. We're still in the grace period, but the decisions are just basically cash it out, renew it. And, you know, at this point, there is some concern, you know, we don't know what the future holds with this COVID stuff and having cash on hand. Is, could be, could be valuable. However, the thing in my understanding of these CDs, there really is no penalty to, to surrender or not surrendering, but. Just to cashing them out early. There's no, there's no penalty there. It's just that you don't get your interest. So with all the, with the C D that, you know. Just matured recently. Basically what I'm saying is by just leaving the CDs as they are and letting them just continue on. At the rates they are now. It, it's the same as cash essentially. And so I've been thinking back and forth about what the, what the best thing to do with that is. And I really think it's. With that C D really just. We can just leave it where it's at for now and just let it renew. It's the, the rate's low. We can go out and search and even get bids if we wanted to. Next month and vote on what to do with that, but it's, it's essentially leaving it where it is right now is the same as holding any cash and so. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. We can use that money first rather than other money.
Right.
Be accruing interest, right? You say it's the same as cash, but would it still be?
So it would, it is accruing interest. Yep, you're right. It's the interest, interest rates right now on CDs. I mean, it's, it's almost. It's very, very low. You know, you're talking like one percent basically in the ballpark of that and so. So even, you know, the, the hard thing is, you know, at one percent interest rate on this low of a C D. Even having Lori go out and renegotiate the rate and spend a few hours doing that, you know, at her rate where the labor costs almost negates any of the interest that we would get. In doing that. And so it's kind of a lost. Endeavor in some ways, but we want to do, you know, we want to make a smart decision there. And so. I think, I think with that ones, with the Collins, we just leave it, just let it go to cash and just let it, or sorry, let it renew. And then, and then if we need to use it, just let it go to cash or if we go back, find better C D rates within the next month or something. We, we cash that C D out, lose ten days of interest or whatever that's been, which is, which is, you know, dollars and then. And then find a better rate, but the problem is rates are just so low right now. It's almost, yeah, it's very hard to justify that. So.
So you recommend letting it renew?
I, I, I do for, yep. Yep. And, and if, and if, and if we go and find out, I mean, nothing is really incredibly advantageous right now. To do. And so I'm going to recommend just letting it renew and then in basically in the next month, if Lori. Finds other C D rates that are better, that it would make sense to do that, given her time that she has to put into it, then we can just do that. But. But yeah, for now, just, just letting it. Letting it renew.
Okay. Does, is there a motion? You want to motion that?
Yeah.
You let it renew?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, that's five zero. Okay, it'll renew. Okay, got that, Lori? And then you're going to watch for rates.
Yes.
As we go on. Thank you. Anything else, Bobby?
No.
Okay.
I've got a question for you, Bobby. First of all, I want to thank you for providing me with the additional information. I don't know if everybody on the council got this or not, but I finally got a year-to-date budget. And I was reading the operations manual, which dates back to two thousand and five. And on page twenty-two of the manual, they said, one of the things that we should have is a year-to-date budget. And a year-to-date budget, I, I think I under, I understand this. So for example. So far, nine twelfths or nine months out of twelve have passed by. And so we are seventy-five percent into the fiscal year. So right now, you're, the adjustments that you made, if I get it right. If it shows one hundred percent, that means, that means that we're right on budget. If it's over one hundred percent, is this right, Bobby?
If I'm understanding you correctly, yes.
Okay, and if it's over one hundred percent, it means that we're, that we are, that we. Lost, kind of lost, lost track a little bit of the budget or we have to adjust it for next year. And if it's under one hundred percent, it means that we haven't spent that money or we haven't used those expenses yet. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, depending on whether it's an income or expense. But yeah, generally speaking, yeah, I mean, in our, the way I am, I'm still learning about our cash flow, but it's not very consistent from what I understand. So. It's very, you know, sequential. It's not very consistent from month to month. But anyway, yeah, continue.
So, so with the commercial. So with the benefits levies, for example, we're at seventy-six percent. So we're right on budget. Is that, actually, because we're not at a hundred percent, we're under budget by twenty-five percent. Is that the way to read that?
I believe you're thinking correctly.
Okay. So.
In front of me, but.
So for example, building permits, we've brought in forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And we budgeted ten thousand dollars. So we're up over budget by six hundred and seven percent. Is that right?
I'm pulling it up, but I mean, if, if what you're saying is correct and that sounds right.
Okay. So.
Casey, which one are you, are you looking at? Which document?
This is something that, that Bobby prepared for me.
Well, so let me clarify. It's all it is, Sarah, is the normal profit and loss that Lori sent out. But I just, I just took basically the one hundred percent of the full budget, right? And I just multiplied it by seventy-five percent because we're nine twelfths of the way through the year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So if you, if you understand it right, Sarah, and it, and it. It is kind of a management tool that allows you to, to weigh various line items and see how we're doing. Relative to the budget, you know, just intuitively, kind of immediately. It gives you. A way of, of saying, hey, those expenses are a little bit too high. I don't want to get to the end of the year and find out, you know, we've got a much worse problem that we, than we thought we had. Or our revenues are a little bit low. What's the reason for that? And sometimes it's just timing issues, you know? But sometimes the revenues aren't coming in like the budget anticipated and we've got to take some steps, you know, to, to rectify that. So for example. Just see if I can find one. Okay.
Troy playing the piano right now? Sounds amazing.
Is he any good?
Well, it sounded good. I wanted, I wanted him to keep going for a minute there.
I thought it was his cat.
So. One of the things I was looking at. Is the legal, legal expenses.
Okay.
Were like. Well, for example, here's one, total public safety. We're just at a hundred and eight percent of the budget right now, which means that's, you know, that's really close to where we want to be. We'd like to be at a hundred percent. We're at a hundred and eight percent.
But that's like current, that's not a hundred and eight percent of the total budget. It's a hundred and eight percent of.
Up seventy-five percent.
Yeah, so we should be, we should be at about a hundred percent and, you know, give or take, you know, ten percent, we're, we're probably okay. But some of these budget items are like three hundred percent over budget. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure if, you know, what all is involved in that, like, you know. Removal, snow removal. Well, that's not going to get any higher than it has already. But it's a way of looking at the budget and, and making good decisions about, you know, how to. How to deal with it. So thank you very much, Bobby.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, anything else for Bobby? We'll go to Lisa's report. Lisa. You submitted a report and I want to give you a shout out. I mean. You know, she showed the picture of the website when it talks about COVID nineteen, about the changes. Lisa's been working very many hours every week since this whole COVID started. And we've been updating sometimes on a daily basis. And so everyone. All the information about COVID nineteen and what's going on, you should look at the website. She has very good. Labels, you know, she has that COVID. What do you call it? The COVID virus? You know, and it has the updates of when things are canceled, what's happening. And I've been encouraging the public to please look at the website because it's very current. And she's really done a good job. There's web links to what's going on with the county, with. The state, with the CDC, you know, very good things. And she deserves a big shout out for this. And everyone needs to look at it and know that it's really up to date. And thanks, Lisa, for that. I don't know. What did you want to say about the report?
Actually, nothing. There it is. Follow the links.
Okay. So we'll go on to, that's everything, right? Okay, thanks again. And then we'll go to the presentation concerning proposed Think Bin redevelopment. And I see David Kelth is here and Ben Logston and Nate Katie are on tonight. And I know that Sarah received. Some of the pictures. So who's going to start? It looks like Nate, maybe. I see Nate. Let's see.
Louise, this is Ben Logston. How's everybody tonight?
Oh, good. I see. You're, you're the black screen. Okay.
I'm, I'm going to spare everybody the video. So. I, I need a haircut. I. Should have gotten one before we got quarantined, but. Thanks, thanks for your time. And I think the way we're going to try to present this, Sarah, Sarah. I don't think, I can't, I can't manipulate the report, I assume. Correct, Sarah?
No, that's right. So just kind of, I'll just tell me when to move.
I'll just, I'll just say the title of the screen when I'm ready to move on, but.
Okay, can you guys all see it? I have it up on screen.
I can see it.
I can see it.
All right, so. The folks that, that are carryover from, from last fall's council, this will look very familiar. It's, it's basically the same presentation. And I'll, I'm going to try to kind of run through. The presentation we have here tonight and I'll, I'll try to keep it. Brief, but if anybody's got any questions, feel free to speak up. Steve. Do you want to give anybody, counsel any background before, before I walk through this or would you rather me, me go ahead and present? And then have some discussion after, after I'm through?
Well, I would defer to the mayor and council on their desires. From my perspective, I think that, that what I've outlined in my report. Is sufficient for my purpose to, you know, let you go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. I, I just wasn't. Privy of the reporter, I didn't read it, Steve, one of the two, but. I'll, I'll go ahead and kind of walk through what we have to present here. Tonight, we're, we're talking about. The Think Bin development and specifically, it's really the side of the old Athletic Club. That was torn down late last year. And just a little background. On the project, as I move to the next slide here, we'll. Well, um, the, um, University of Court Club, or Athletic Club closed in, in eighteen, as everyone knows, or I'm sure they know. And, uh, there was an RFP for, um, for that site, plus, um, some, um, some other land around, uh, around Finkbine, some of it, you know, most of the rest of it frankly is in Iowa City. Um, and they issued an RFP, uh, back in the fall of, of, actually summer of eighteen, which responded to in the fall of eighteen to develop. Some of that land, which, which included the, uh, the piece of land that we're going to speak about tonight, where the athletic club stood. Build the suit, focused development, both of which, um, I'm representing Nate, Nate Cady, uh, also is representing tonight. Um, we were the successful respondent to the, uh, to the RFP. And, uh, we've, we've taken the last, um, year, a little over a year here to start, uh, kind of working through what, uh, um, what the university's, um, goals and objectives are, and how we can kind of collaborate with the golf course and the communities, uh, communities around it. So, and the university's goals to, to, um, move on to the next slide for, for Finkbine really was to, um, try to, you know, create some, some, some of these, this, I guess, excess land, um, that kind of sits around the golf course, was to try to, um, create some long-term value for the university. Uh, and really, um, have something that would be, uh, kind of an, an asset, or add to the, uh, appeal of the golf course, and then the communities around it. Um, something that, uh, um, would really kind of be befitting of, you know, uh, property that abuts, uh, university land, but also, uh, frankly, practical in, in the sense that, you know, works. We're building something that, uh, um, that is both a benefit, but, um, a, a need, for the community. So, the goal, of course, um, there's an income component, um, that would be in, in the form of a, uh, a ground lease, um, active university, and so that's, you know, that's really, um, solves the, the, uh, the value equation for the university. But then also, um, trying to get something that, uh, is a, is a quality asset for a long time around, uh, around the golf course and for University Heights and City of Iowa City, and, uh, and really kind of, um, allows some, some collaboration between, uh, um, the golf course, um, kind of, what we've really tried to do is, uh, think about how, um, whatever we develop around, uh, around Finkbine and that, that, uh, that neck of the woods there is a, um, a catalyst for, you know, for University Heights area and the, uh, the golf course itself, so they, they can kind of play off each other. And, um, I think we, we feel like what we're presenting here tonight, or the first project out there, would do that. So, um, kind of what we're, um, what we're at least preliminarily planning there, the first project, if we can go to the next slide, Sarah, um, would be a, uh, and what we're calling an active adult apartment project, and, and active adult, i- is really, uh, kind of an apartment that is programmed for, uh, fifty-five plus occupants, empty nesters, if you will, um, and up. And, um, the idea is that those folks typically, uh, would, would kind of have some synergy with the golf course, would like some proximity to the university, um, campus, the hospital, um, within walking distance of, uh, connections to trails and, and good opportunities to, to get out and enjoy, uh, uh, enjoy the community. Along with that, uh, first phase, the active adult, we're considering some townhomes that would, basically, uh, but, uh, the north, um, north side of Melrose, the south side of the golf course. Uh, and then there's actually a few that would be on the, kind of the south corner of the parcel we're talking about tonight. And then future phases, that we, we've, we've talked about other projects, but I think tonight, we really want to focus on this first active adult project. And, uh, and kind of the, the issue that sits in front of us tonight is, uh, is one that frankly I haven't encountered in my career, and it's, there's a, there's a boundary line, and if you want to move to the next slide, there's a boundary line that actually, um, bisects, um, the university athletic club lot. And so, next slide, um, you can kind of see the, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, let, let's, uh, let's keep it there. So there's, we have a label there, the proposed active adult project. And, and what that is, is about a hundred and twenty-eight units, um, of, uh, of apartments that would have underground parking, um, and have some amenities, a pool, um, indoor pool. There's, uh, um, some programming involved in the, uh, the folks that manage this, that, that, uh, the residents can take advantage of. There's a rooftop patio that we've, we've programmed in the space. And it, so it's a, you know, it's a large project that, it kind of fills up that lot nicely. You can see the, the Finkbine commuter drive runs along the west. The new clubhouse, um, is further to the west, you can see how we've kind of connected, um, the drives. Right to the clubhouse and, uh, the entrance, the main entrance to the active adult project. Um, and you can see that, that issue we're talking about tonight is the proper, the current property line between Iowa City and City of University Heights actually cuts, cuts across our project in two, two locations. One on the southwest corner, um, it's kind of the southwest wing, I'll call it, and then the north, wing, um, uh, the boundary cuts across that. So everything to the top of the page, um, would be Iowa City, so the north wing would be in Iowa City as it stands now. The southwest wing would be in Iowa City, and the rest of the project would be in University Heights. And so to, the decision that we frankly started talking about last fall, we, we paused, to, to work through some issues with, uh, with our performa, and really to basically to make sure that, uh, we knew this project was financially viable. Was, was what boundary, um, shifting the boundary line? Either, um, moving the project, moving the boundary line to the west and north, so the whole project sits in University Heights, if that makes sense? Or moving the boundary line to the, to the south and to the east, so the whole project sits in Iowa City. And as, as part of that, um, shift, there would be a, uh, twenty-eighty agreement, that, uh, that would be signed to share, essentially share the taxes after the boundary line is moved. So, nobody is really giving up tax revenue as part of the boundary line shift. It's just simply sharing it, um, sharing it with a twenty-eighty agreement, which is, and I think you even presented some earlier tonight, it's pretty, pretty standard agreement. Particularly for University Heights, since you share some services with Iowa City and Corvo. Does anybody have any questions about, you know, the, the project, before I go any further? Okay. So, um, let's, let's, uh, the, the boundary line there is pretty good. I'm going to have Sarah go ahead and scroll through some of the, some pictures of the development. And so there's kind of a rendered site plan, which again, you can see the, um, the active adult apartment project sitting on the east side of the Finkbine commuter drive, the new clubhouse, and, and, um, some of the, you can actually see some of the townhomes that we've contemplated along Melrose to the, to the west there, that would be in Iowa City. Um, if you scroll down, you can see some, some early images of, of our project. And so in the foreground there, there's, um, the active adult project. I will say that, um, these renderings, um, because we're kind of just re-kicking off this process, we've had some meetings with the university, and the one thing I can tell you about the images, is that, is that they're, they're sure to change. Um, frankly, I think generally this architecture, um, of the, the building itself is pretty close, but the roof lines, I think will flatten a little bit. And part of that is to kind of lower the scale of the project in general. But, uh, you know, we, we feel like it's, uh, it's a nice look, it's just, it's just going to go through some changes here as we, if we make some decisions on, as we make some decisions on which boundary, um, we're going to shift into, we'll, we'll, we'll probably progress on our architectural drawings and, and make changes with, uh, through further conversations with the university and with, uh, I guess whatever municipality we start working with, uh, to move forward.
Then, then is this building here an apartment building?
You know, that, that's, these are, these are real early images. So we, we had, um, we've looked at other concepts out here, Sarah. That would be more of a condo project, um, and that, and that's honestly, that's, it's very early. It, it's, uh, we have nothing, um, really in the works there. It would, it would be in Iowa City, um, just because it's, it's fully in Iowa City, if we were to move forward something. But that was the intent, is that maybe there'd be some more housing, um, over there. We're just, we kind of use as a placeholder for now, just to show the kind of scale that, that could be there at some point if we, you know, if the numbers made sense.
Okay, and the same with the, the townhouses would be purely in Iowa City too?
Those would be purely in Iowa City, yes. If you can, if you move your cursor down to the kind of closest to the, um, yeah, right there, there's actually some townhomes. Uh, yep, right there, and so those, um, you know, we could certainly decide what to do with those, whether we shift the boundary all the way, uh, to one side or the other. Now we're sitting in University Heights.
And this is the building that straddles?
Correct, that is the building that, uh, so you can see kind of the north wing of that, which would be to the right of the page, actually right now. Um, sits now in Iowa City, and then the, kind of the, the wing on the far left side of the page, yep, sits in Iowa City as well, the rest of it is in University Heights, so, um, unusual, to say the least, so. So, um, you can scroll down, there's a, I think there's a couple more images there, just, uh, another view kind of from, from the south, south side of Melrose, looking, looking north again, um, real early, um, renderings of those, those roofs, the roof lines, based on some feedback from the university and, and, uh, even discussions with, uh, our development partners, that, that roof line will flatten. Um, so it'll be more of a flat roof, um, rather than a pitched roof. But scale, I think this, these at least kind of give you an idea of scale and, and what it might look like. You can, you can see there's some, some entrances to some underground parking, that's, that's a drive that goes, um, kind of in the south side of the building there, and there'd be another entrance, um, a couple other locations, so. Um, and so just kind of general discussion, we can kind of move to the next slide again, trying to move through this efficiently, but certainly if anybody has any questions, feel free to speak up. So, looking, looking for kind of a, a decision, and have some discussion on this corporate boundary line adjustment. And, and we really have identified a, uh, an approval process, or there's a state process actually where you can do this, um, that Steve probably outlined in his, uh, in his report to council. Um, the adjustment, like I said earlier, would be accompanied by a twenty-eighty, uh, which, um, would share, share revenue from the real estate taxes created from this project. Right now, if you look at those wings, be, just because of how that square footage breaks up, um, with that north wing and the southwest wing being in Iowa City, and the rest of the project being in University Heights, square, just on a straight, straight square footage basis, uh, right now, about fifty-two percent of the projects is in University Heights, forty-eight percent is in Iowa City. And so, um, it's pretty, pretty close to an even split, but I, I included some numbers, um, on the next slide that we can take a look at. Um, the active adult project opening dates are time sensitive, I just want to point that out. In fact, in the fall, I think we were probably in a, um, when, when we were looking to start this summer, um, we were timing, frankly, we probably have a little more time now. It's, uh, given what's gone on the last, uh, month, we're, uh, we really think the earliest this project would start would be the spring of twenty-one. Just given, uh, given the project, this scale, and, and, uh, with the economic slowdown, everybody is, um, everybody's talked about, it's just going to take some time to, to raise the funding and, and get approval for this. So we, we, uh, we twenty-twenty-one, s- spring twenty-twenty-one to, to kind of hit a, uh, hit an opening date that works, uh, for these active adult projects typically want to, want to open in the summer timeframe, so. Um, and then just, you know, really, they're, our goal as developer here is to have one, and I think everybody can, can understand this, one municipal jurisdiction, um, to answer to. We go through the approval process, which is kind of why we're here tonight. So we'd really like to start off knowing, um, who we're going to be working with long-term. You know, start the process to, to shift the boundary line, and, uh, and just kind of make it, um, I guess, a little easier for the design and the development team to, uh, to navigate the process moving forward. And then obviously, long-term, having one jurisdiction, um, it's pretty, pretty hard to imagine how you'd, you'd have a, a project that would be straddling boundary lines. Just, uh, wouldn't work very well, um, for the, uh, long-term owners of the project. So, um, next slide, just to kind of walk through kind of how the revenue split would be. There's, there's one thing that we really didn't talk about last fall, and we, we added this slide, to the information we presented last fall, and again, I know many of you are new, so you didn't see that last fall. But, um, I'll just kind of generally walk through how this, how these numbers, um, would, would split up. You know, depending on what jurisdiction is. So, um, at the top, we have a, a total, and again, this is, this is an assumption on our part. Um, but, um, we've had some discussions with the, uh, the folks at, at the assessor's office. We're guessing they're somewhere around a twenty million dollar, um, assessed value, um, as completed. Um, and, um, and it, it a fifty-two, uh, percent, University Heights, forty-eight percent, Iowa City split. So, um, fifty-two, frankly, the twenty-eighty would, would, um, split the property tax revenue, fifty-two percent to University Heights, forty-eight percent to Iowa City. But it, but it could be in either community, and that's, that's really what we're here to decide, or, or start the process to decide tonight, I realize we're not making any decisions tonight, but. So the total, the, the difference between it going to Iowa City and, um, in, uh, University Heights is there's a different millage rate charged, um, for each community. So, um, if it's in the city of Iowa City, um, under their jurisdiction, uh, there'd be a total, total tax revenue, again, at twenty million dollar assessment, around three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars annually, uh, paid in property tax. Um, if in University Heights, um, if we were to, to move the boundary line, so the project sits in University Heights, that tax revenue, because of the different millage rate, would be two hundred and eighteen thousand, um, or just under two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars a year. So, it's a fair amount of revenue difference just in the, uh, just in the millage rate itself. And so if you, you know, just basically going out of the, the, the bottom line here, the University Heights share, um, in either jurisdiction, if it's in Iowa City, you actually, University Heights actually gets more, um, more tax revenue, because you're taking advantage, or you're getting the advantage of Iowa. More tax revenue because you're taking advantage or you're getting the advantage of Iowa City's higher millage rate. If it's in University Heights, if it stays in University Heights, you actually get less revenue. By moving moving the boundary line so that the project falls in University Heights. So. We thought it was important to just point out that difference. And just, I guess I open it up for discussion and see if anybody has any questions. On the project in general, kind of how those how we came up with. The the numbers here, or or if you want to talk about the boundary.
So Ben, this is Louise. The millage rate you used for, last I knew in Iowa City, it was about seventeen percent. Seventeen, I mean seventeen, and you maybe used eleven for University Heights. Is that?
Yeah, I got the numbers from.
I know. I just don't know the current number for Iowa.
Yeah, I I think it's a it's fifteen.
Fifteen something?
Per thousand for Iowa City. And then, yeah, it's between, it's just under eleven percent per thousand, I think. Louise for for.
I just didn't know Iowa City.
Yeah. Yep.
I've got a question, Ben.
Sure.
This is Casey.
Yep.
I I wondered how the university's land is going to be. Assessed and how it's going to be taxed. I mean, there's. There's quite a bit of variability on that. And I wonder, you know, if the university has given you any guidelines.
Casey, this is David Keft with the university. How are you?
Hi, David.
I can I can talk to that. We'll we'll use the same principle that we did with the city of Iowa City. In our Aspire graduate student housing, which is just to the to the west on the Hawkeye campus over by. The the tennis and rec center. It's our graduate student housing. That's a a public private partnership. There, the value of the land. Because it's a ground lease and this would also be a ground lease. So the value of the land remains in the hands of the state of Iowa, the University of Iowa, so it's tax exempt. What you're. Receiving tax on is the improvements or the value of the buildings. And so those are are fully taxed, but the land itself remains tax exempt.
So so the land, you pay rates on that, don't you, David?
No, no. Land is zero. So right now, this land is is not generating any taxes. To the to either city.
So is that the arrangement you have in Coralville with the medical center there?
Well, that's a little bit different. That's a there's a pilot agreement there and that's a. We're basically paying for sort of our proportioned share of the brownfield cleanups and and. All the development that that the city incurred there and putting utilities and all of that. That there.
So so if I I had a conversation with Doug True about it. And he said, his expectation, I shouldn't drag his name into this, but his expectation that the the land. Would be assessed at about what the the, you know, the going rate is.
Yeah.
That might would go to us. Has that changed since he was in?
It it's. It's that way on any ground lease that we we have. And it's the same that we did on with it with Aspire. And so because the the ground remains in the name of the the state. It it can't be taxed.
So I I understand it can't be taxed, but I know with the student housing. They were paying some rates in order, you know, the the merit student housing to cover. Schools and and infrastructure and those kinds of costs that we incur. Is there anything like that for this?
Uh, no, there there. What was happening on the merit, the old merit student housing is you were simply paying. We were paying the school rate if there was students that were living there, elementary school students that were living there. The university would pay the school district. There there's a a flat rate that they have per. Per student, but there was no rate for any sort of city services there.
So like like sanitary sewer or water or fire or any of that?
It's all university utilities.
Pardon me?
It's it was university utilities. Now, if we're paying. If we're paying for water or sewer, for instance, on this new development, it would be. The the owner of the building, the developer, would be paying those services.
And you and you wouldn't you wouldn't have to share in that.
Correct. That's that's about doing the the P three. If we were to build this property ourselves, we wouldn't be paying any property taxes.
So the arrangement with Iowa City, for example. The bulk of the university sits in Iowa City. Are you paying? I mean, is it all tax exempt or are you paying some rates there?
We it's all tax exempt. For instance, the clubhouse that's under construction right now, it's eleven million dollar. Project, the land and that building are university property. We do not pay any taxes to the city of Iowa City. Unless therefore, we pay it, we pay sewage fee, we pay. If it's not on university water, we pay a water fee. There's there's it goes into our square foot calculation of how much university. On building square footage there is, which goes into our fire life safety calculation to the city of of of. Iowa City, but it doesn't, there's no like lump sum. That just goes to the general fund of 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 Iowa City.
So any any actually actually incurred expenses that we'd have in University Heights, you would pay to offset those?
We wouldn't pay. The developer would pay.
So it would we would pay just as part of our our water bill or our, which sanitary sewer would be charged based on our water usage. But we're going to pay all those charges just like we were. On any other piece of property in town.
Okay. Thanks, Ben.
In Coralville, the at Iowa River Landing, that's university. We own the land, we own the buildings. And so we're paying for services that are being offered there by the city. Paying for some of the, as if we were a developer, paying for some of the brownfield cleanups and all of that. Almost like a special assessment. Here, the university isn't gonna isn't gonna own or operate these buildings. And so the developer. Would be the one who would be paying those 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 fees.
Well, normally apartment complexes, there's about twenty percent, maybe twenty two percent of the value. Is in the land and the rest is in the buildings. But that kind of apportionment doesn't really make a lot of difference in this case. Is that is that kind of the the idea?
Oh, it makes all the difference in this case, right?
I would say so.
I mean. This is Steve. So Iowa law requires assessors. To assess. Land. And improve improvements or or buildings. So. So if you ever look at your assessment that you get in the spring, it'll say this is how much your land is, we valued it at, and this is how much we value your home at. It's the same thing that, you know, the Marriott gets or anybody. It's the land assessment and a building assessment. And for for a homeowner. It doesn't really matter. You add the two together and that's your assessed value. Millage rates by the school, by many other taxing jurisdictions and authorities by the city. They're calculated based on your overall assessed value. Doesn't matter what part is land and what part is building. Here. Here, what the university, what the the what the proposal is, is that. That the value of the land. No matter which jurisdiction, which which city it's in, will not will be exempt. The the assessor still might assess the value, but then it's going to back it out as as exempt. So it it makes a huge difference which amount is assessed as land. And which amount is assessed as improvement or building. Because only the improvement or building valuation is going to generate tax revenue to anybody.
And Steve, this is David. I I think Ben's. The top of that page, that that twenty million dollar assessment is the building valuation.
It is just the building valuation. That's correct.
Doesn't include the exempt land portion of it.
And is and that's what makes the project feasible then, Ben?
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, frankly, it is. Yes, tho- those taxes and part of part of why we kind of paused is. Casey, as you know, real estate taxes are a big component of particularly multi-family. Developments. And so it it definitely is a. One of the reasons why. I think we're able to make it work. So.
Okay. I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So so let me just clarify reiterate what you said. So basically, if we move it, if we move it. If we move the, i- if the properties, it's the developments in Iowa City. We're going to have more revenue. If it's in University Heights, we're going to have less. If money is the only factor, is that true?
That's correct. If money is, if you know, if revenue. Is how you'd make your decision, you're you're getting more revenue. If it's in Iowa City, just by virtue of the the millage rate.
If there aren't any more questions, Steve, do you want to talk about? Some of the next steps as you did in your report about. You know, we don't expect a decision tonight. I mean, this is just an introduction. And we might either need to do like a. Special meeting, a work session. I don't I don't know. You want to review some of what you wrote in your report?
Yeah, I'm happy to. There are quite a few moving parts here. There really are. One of the things I would I would strongly suggest is that you don't. Get too hung up on what's depicted in these images. It it's I'm I'm not a developer. I've represented my share, I guess, but. And I've and I've certainly seen developers come before the University Heights City Council. And I think it's always a struggle for a developer because you come in and if you just talk about kind of what you have in mind. Then then everybody says, well, can't you show us something? And and then if you bring in something and you show them, then it's like, then people say, well, that looks terrible. We don't like that. And then the guy says, well, I it was just an idea so I can show you how it would fit on the lot. Or or. Two months into it, they start putting detail to it and people say, well, that's not what you showed us the first go around. So I think developers are. And I, you know, I don't want to speak for Ben and Nate and David, but I I think it's kind of hard. So they put some images together so that you can look at something. But my point is. The council isn't being asked now to like approve a design or a layout or or anything. It's it's it's. That's down the road. So don't get hung up on what you're being shown because it could change a lot. It probably will change a lot or could, I guess I should say. Second thing.
Go ahead. I well, maybe I'll interject the one, you know, just on that line. If. You know, if it were to change substantially, you know, from what we're seeing now and actually. You know, not that you guys would do this or whatever, but you know, it turns out that now Iowa City is only thirty percent of the project. Or or University Heights is only thirty percent of the project or and Iowa City is the remainder because. You know what I mean? Because the project changed. Well, that's a significant difference. And. So I would want to know that. Or at least, you know what I'm saying, have some type of reassurance that that's not going to. Because that's a big factor, right?
Yeah, one, one, one comment I I will say to that to that end is that. The site plan that you've seen tonight was part of the the. Year long process was was starting to look at some of those site studies. And so we're fairly confident that that building is going to sit. As it's kind of shown, it was kind of designed almost to follow that Think Mine commuter. Drive. And so that was kind of the desire of the university to make it feel like it kind of belonged there.
Yeah, Ben, this is David. I would also add that this is. Gone through sort of a rigorous process within the university. Our our campus. Internal architects, our our master planning team, our campus planning team. Have all have all reviewed it and and so is university leadership, athletics leadership, really trying to. Create this synergy with the new golf course and trails and golf cart paths and all of that. And so. While the 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 final finishes and and. You know, exterior skin of the buildings is is subject to change. I think the general sort of layout. And and Ben's pro forma that he's been working on is all based on on that sort of. Layout and design. So I don't imagine that the percentages, yeah, they could always switch. You actually do construction drawings. You know, two percent here or there, but I think the the general layout. Is is what you're looking at, even that sense where it looks like it's one long building. The way the buildings are angled, it's really just connected on that first floor. And there's there's those view sheds through those different wings is all stuff that campus. Planning team is is weighed in on and helped develop.
So this is Steve. Thanks for that question, Bobby. That's real, it's critical distinction. The footprint, as noted, I, you know, is one thing. I I was I was more focused on what David described. As finishes and 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 the skin, and that was my point. So I'm really glad you asked that because that's that's a big distinction. The other things I was going to mention, and and some of these I mentioned in my report, but. It's really important to to recognize that the the proposition for the council, either council, is we're not talking about ownership of land. The university owns this land. The university is going to continue to own this land. So that's a big distinction. And the university's ownership of the land is also. It makes makes this this idea, this this proposal. You know, a lot different than if it was, you know, ABC. Development group that owned it. And and they had, everything else was the same. They came. Into the council and they said, well, look, you know, we bought this from the university and, you know, it's just kind of unworkable to have this line here. Could we move it one way or the other? Well, I'm still going to say, well, you know, we're not talking about ownership. Of the land. We're just talking about what city the land is going to sit in. But but a council might well say, well, okay, but you're talking about a, you know. Construction of a building and and eventually that building is going to have a useful life and and, you know, maybe maybe. None of us is around to see what happens next, but something's going to happen next. And and that building gets torn down and then and then, you know. What what city that land is in could have a huge impact on what happens next, you know? What's it get zoned for? Okay, that sort of thing. And and anytime we're dealing with the university. As a landowner. Not only, as as David said, does the university typically not pay any property taxes for sort of the university uses. Of of. The land that owns. And the buildings that it owns. But it's also not subject to city zoning and other regulations. So that makes this proposition different than if it was private ownership. Even though we're not talking about ownership here anyway, we're just talking about what city the land sits in because. As long as the university owns this land. The city of University Heights and the city of Iowa City won't have anything to say about. About zoning. And I should clarify that as long if the university owns it and is putting up its own. You know, it's own is putting up its own building. They want to build a new business building. They don't have to come to the city of University Heights or the city of Iowa City and say. You know, we'd like it to be kind of this high or set back about this far. I mean, the university is a good. Partner and a good neighbor, and I don't mean to suggest anything to the contrary, that they work with with, you know, with. You know. Community planners, they work with safety people all the time and all that stuff. But. Point blank, when, you know, when Iowa City says, you know, you can only build this high. That doesn't apply to the university because the university is the state. So just something to to keep in mind.
So it's pretty much. I I guess they're pretty much testing the waters to see. Future. Planning of this building that the is why they're here tonight to to see how negotiable. We sound to them as the developer goes. Where they want the building or if we're going to surrender our our boundary. Is that really the main purpose here?
I think the main purpose, Doug, is is. As as I've said, and as as others have said tonight. There are just, there are several reasons that if you looked at putting constructing. The building that's been shown in this in this with this footprint. You know, the idea of having of having part of that building in one city and part. of having, of, of having part of that building in one city and part of it in the other, it, it's pretty difficult. I don't know that it's impossible, but from a, our approval, you know, our zoning does, you know, all that stuff. Yeah, okay. So I, I think that the proposition, the idea for the city of University Heights, and I outlined this in my memo, but at one point, the, the idea was why don't we just move this boundary south and east and it'll be in Iowa City and we'll get a 2080 agreement and that'll be great. And, and then Iowa, is it, and University Heights kind of said, well, maybe not. Let's talk, whatever. And Iowa City said, okay, let's move it south and east, or let's move it north and west. It'll be in your town, it'll be in our town. So, so that's what puts the ball in our court, so to speak. And in a general fashion, that is the question. A, does the city of University Heights sort of see value and purpose in, in moving the boundary? And B, if so, is it sub one to the east and south, or is it sub two to the north and west? And I do want to say that, that, that option C is, you know, no, we're just, we don't want to move the boundary, you know? So you're, you're not, so, so it's that general idea of how would, how does the city of University Heights, meaning the council, react to this? And as Louise said very, very appropriately, it's not a vote tonight, you know? Is, is it a situation where, okay, there are a lot of moving parts. We're still getting our heads around it. Let's have a work session to talk about this some more. You know, you have some options, certainly have options that way. But that's generally the, that's generally the question. Are you in favor of seeing some kind of movement of the boundary? And if so, which way would you like to see it moved? And as a, as a big part of that, what more can we tell you? You know, what more do you want to know? And there is a lot. And I've got a lot more to say, not necessarily tonight, but I, I can if anybody wants me to.
I, I've got a, I've got a question, Steve. If I understand Bobby's question correctly, if it's all moved into University Heights, then, then the taxes are $218,000 based on that assessed value. And if it's all moved into the city of Iowa City, the taxes are about $100,000 more. Is, am I correct in understanding that?
That's what, that's what the pro forma, or that's, that's what the numbers that are presented tonight from the development team say. And I don't mean to back away from them. I just can't, I can't say they're right, but I'm not suggesting they're wrong. That's exactly, that's, they've been working hard on numbers to put together for the, for this council to consider, just for that.
It would be a, it would be a benefit to the developer if we kept it all in University Heights. That would make the project a little bit more feasible.
The, the taxes would be less, yes, if they were in University Heights. University Heights would get less revenue, obviously. I think the advantage for us being in Iowa City frankly is, is Iowa City is probably more set up staff-wise to, you know, to go through the approval process. For something like this, it's just a little more, Steve and I have talked about how that might look going through University Heights. It's just a little, little more cumbersome for us to go through that process just because every, you know, it's not.
Well, you, you think of it, you think of it, Dan, if, if it's $100,000 a year, let's say, and you, you know, you put a capitalization rate on it even 10%, that's worth a million bucks.
Yes, it's a big difference.
Yeah.
Now, Casey.
Kind of adds up.
Yeah. And Casey, you know this better than me certainly. But, but, but keep in mind that the, the building that's at issue here, at least the, the one that straddles the line, is, is proposed to be a, you know, an apartment building. And they're not going to be owner occupied. These aren't going to be, you know, they're going to be apartments. So how that valuation impacts, you know, how that taxation impacts the valuation of a, of an income property? If it's the same cap rate, you know, like I said, you know that better than me, but I think it's a good point.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve.
There's a benefit from the project, or at least the residence. If this were in Iowa City, kind of the whole complex would be in Iowa City. Whereas if this one building is in University Heights, there's kind of like going to be the townhouses and some other buildings that are going to have different garbage service, right? And I mean.
Yeah. Sarah, we've contemplated like a condo association that would kind of manage this whole site. And you're right, it's probably one jurisdiction frankly is probably a little bit simpler. But I mean, I think there's, we'll manage our way through that if it's in separate jurisdictions.
Is the intention, Ben, the intention initially is to make it all apartments for rent rather than condominiums for sale?
That's the intention, yes.
Is that, is that some, I mean, it's going to be probably, it's going to be a condominium project, not, not necessarily for sale, but that's how it's structured in order to keep the, you know, there's not that much of a difference, but there's enough difference in taxes so that it behooves you, I think, to keep it as, as condominiums. But the apartment concept may change over time depending on what the, what the market tells you. Is that right?
Yeah, I think there, there's some, we have a, you know, Casey, you know, we're not, you know, we're, we're commercial developers. We don't do a lot of multifamily. We, we have a, we'll have a partner, operations partner involved with this that, that manages, they actually, they manage some, some senior living units. They have some active adult projects they manage as well. And so there'll be some programming and some synergies that would, I guess, attract, then the size of unit, finish of the unit would all be kind of geared towards that 50, what, what we're calling 55 plus. But yeah, generally it's, you know, they are apart, they are apartments. They, they happen to be probably larger and a little higher end than, than, you know, obviously some other rentals around town.
Got it. Thanks, Ben.
Yep. Let, let me throw in, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but the land's going to be owned by the university. So it's not going to be subjected to a condominium regime. So I don't.
Well, yeah, there may be some sort of a homeowner's, you know, covenants and association that's.
Yeah, of course. But in terms of ownership, I mean, you can't, you can't submit, you can't submit a, a real property to a condominium regime. You know, Casey, whether it's to, to treat them like apartments, but own them like condos for a tax reason, a lot of that's gone away anyway. But even if it's still there, you know, you, you know, to make something a condo, you've got to divide up ownership of not just the paint on the walls and the parking lot, but the land. So I don't think that's in the cards from what I understand.
Yeah, there, what, what will happen on this particular large building is there will be a, you know, a plat, so to speak, created and there'll be a ground lease for that particular parcel, that new parcel. The townhomes that are along Melrose were likely to sell the property in, in one large parcel to, to Ben and his group. And then they will subdivide those into individual townhomes to sell.
Right.
How long is this agreement with this Iowa? How many years?
It would typically be something like a 40-year ground lease. Usually it, it, it goes to the, sort of the, the length of the average life of, of the building. So at the end of that ground lease, it's usually the, the time when the buildings are probably are ready to be, you know, repurposed or, or raised and, and something new built in, in its place.
Okay.
Steve, do you think there, there's an option out there where we say, okay, we'll, we'll assign jurisdiction to either town, but don't move the boundaries? Do you think that's, there's any option like that?
No, I, I, no. I mean, in other words, sort of act like we're, you know, like reached the agreements and treated as such. We've looked at that. And when I say we, what I mean is, I've looked at that and so has legal staff at the city of Iowa City. And we, we I think both, both, I think separately talked to some people with, there's some state planning boards that have to approve jurisdictional boundary shifts and like creating cities and stuff. They don't have a lot of work creating cities these days, but once in a while. And, and consulted some other sources like the Iowa League of Cities. And, and, you know, we can't, we can't sort of own, you know, keep the boundary where it is, but then, but then sort of contract away our, our zoning authority, you know, say to Iowa City, hey, you've got staff for this. And why don't you guys just, we'll just, we'll just go by whatever you come up with in terms of, you know, the regulations and the approvals. And, and we can reach kind of a 2080 agreement. And you can go ahead and tax it, but, but we'd like to keep the boundary where it is. For one, another point, Iowa City would say, well, we can't, we can't tax by sort of contract, you know? We can only tax the part that's in Iowa City. So then the Iowa, you know, I'm, I'm getting beyond your question, but the answer, I don't think there's a way to do that. And we've looked.
I would think, I would think it would be a little awkward if half the building didn't have to pay library fees and the other half did, or they were paying differences in sewage or water costs from one, one part of the building to another part of the building. It just, it would, it seems to me it would be awfully cumbersome to do that.
You could actually have someone, you know, someone's living room be in one jurisdiction and the bedroom be in another. It also causes a, an issue for fire and police response having, having who's, who's, who's building, whose land is this particular unit in and what jurisdiction?
Well, what's, what, I guess, for sake of everyone on the call, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, personally, I'm, yeah, let's, let's move forward with making a decision or next steps to making a decision. What are those for this? I mean, I just want to understand. I mean, you know, from a resources standpoint, I would agree. And University Heights doesn't have the resources that would be needed for a developer and just to be, you know, this quick decision-making process and all that. You know, from a financial perspective, it seems like we benefit from the higher mill rate in Iowa City. But I just want to be sure I understand the downsides to it. And so what are the next steps to do that, Steve or Louise?
Work session. I think a work session.
I do too.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I've been thinking. I mean, you had suggested in your report that you could go by the zoning commission and get them to weigh in on it. But I think it's important that this council really look at it closely before passing it on or anything and spending a little more time. And I'd like to be done in the next five minutes because we've gone over our time. Oh dear. And, but anyway, so I'm thinking a work session so people can understand it better. I mean, unless the council thinks different, I think.
I'm in favor of that.
And then maybe come up with some questions that you need answered or, you know, the, like Bobby said, the pros and the cons. I mean, I can think of some. But, and then I think after looking at it, the council needs to kind of think about it a little bit before the work session and study it some more. And maybe ask Ben and Nate some questions in the meantime, too. I mean, I'm a little more familiar with it, but I haven't seen these figures before. And it hasn't changed a lot, but I think it would be helpful to have a work session and hammer out some of these things.
I, I support you on that, Louise.
Do ya? Okay.
Yeah, me too. I'd like to, yeah, so we can just spend more time, like, like Bobby said, thinking about what are the downsides and.
Can we, can we, can we email you or I guess who would be the, I don't know who the person, just as we're thinking through it during the weeks or whatever, list of questions? And someone can compile that and then send it on to the guys that, you know, developers. And then hopefully we can have some of those answers by the time we get to that meeting.
Oh yeah, that's a very good idea.
Send them to you or what, what's the process?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we could send them directly to them, that, you know, Ben and Nate, but maybe it'd be good for everybody to see the questions, too.
Yeah. And then we send them one list, too, if we did it that way, like compile all the questions from all of us.
Yeah, one, one list might be a little easier for us to, to respond to, and then we can kind of get you a comprehensive.
Oh, okay.
Response. But it, you can, however you want, we could compile them to and respond to them, Louise, however you guys want to do it.
Have you guys talked to Iowa City about this? What, what's been their gut instinct? They just started laughing?
No, Iowa City actually kind of had the, I think Steve, Steve touched on earlier, Iowa City kind of had the reaction, say, we're okay, whichever, whichever way you want to shift the boundary, Iowa City was, was fine with. And so that's kind of why it sits before University Heights.
I want to say that Iowa, I want to say that the city of Iowa City generously said, we will let you decide. That's a very generous thing, I think, that the city of Iowa City said for us that we could decide. And they will pay either way. So I want to say that. That was very generous, I think.
Yeah.
The only other thing I would add about a process moving forward, I, I think I touched on this very briefly in my report, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to Louise, the mayor, about it. But I, I wonder if there might be a, a, a way to, to approach the MPO JC to see if, if they might staff this, this consideration from a, you know, from a municipal planning standpoint, you know? I mean, I'm a city attorney. I'm not a, I'm not a municipal planner. And we don't, we don't really have one of those on staff. But MPO JC fills the role when we, when we, you know, when we have things like the comprehensive plan review and a bunch of other things that we've done. So I would just suggest that as a possibility.
Excellent. And they've never turned us down.
I know. They're always so great.
They've never said no. So that's a very good idea.
Have them attend a working session.
If they would, I would. If they would be willing to come, I would certainly invite them. I've got a list of stuff to kind of go over, think about, question, whatever. But, you know, I wouldn't mind having their input for the city.
Okay, yeah. I, I, I did see that in an early email. I forgot about it. Yes, yes. Very good. Okay, so let's, let's do that. Get questions to me. And then I'll also contact MPO JC, Kent Rolston, and see what they can do. I think their schedule's a little different now. A lot of meetings have been canceled. So we'll see where they are with projects right now and when we can set that up. And then we'll email the group some dates, you know? Maybe we can get some dates that start with someone, you know, like maybe David and Ben and Nate. Give us some dates. In, in the evening is best, right?
Okay.
For everyone on the council, like six, seven o'clock.
Louise, it's David. Just, just so you know, that Kent Rolston does sit on the university's master planning team. So he's, he's sort of familiar. We, we don't spend a lot of time on this particular project, but he would be familiar with some of the backgrounds of the project already.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. So let's go from there and then we'll come up with some, we'll also try at the same time to get some dates of talking to Kent and you. And then we'll put some dates out for everybody. And I think maybe about an hour and a half, no more than two hours, right? Maybe something like that. A meeting like no more than two hours. And it'd be either six or 7:00 PM. Okay, let's, let's plant that.
Feel free, Louise, if you want to consolidate the questions, you can just forward those to me and Ben and I and David can.
Perfect. I'll go to you, Nate. Okay, very good. You'll be the contact person. Okay, perfect. Okay. Well, thank you very much for this. Now, as we move forward, we'll try to get this done within the next four weeks, you know? See what dates we can come up with, hopefully sooner, but we'll see. I mean, I think the Zoom meeting worked pretty well. I mean, you know, we're making the best of what we have. And I think I can still see people and this is good and I can, so we'll go from there, okay?
Very good. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, does council have any questions about any of that? Okay, good. Cause let's see. let's see, do we have any announcements? Um, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none?
Yeah, I've got an objection.
You have an objection?
Was Karen gonna talk to us about, uh, is she gonna give us some dates by the end of the week? Is that the idea?
By the end of the week.
Okay, then I'm perfectly fine with it, with, uh, adjournment.
Okay, are there any other objections to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone, and thanks.
Thanks, Louise. Thanks, everybody.
Take care.